Meeting of the South Hunnerton Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December 30th, 2021 by posting the notice with the respective clerks of the City of Lambeville, Borough of Stockton, and Township of West Amwell, and advertised on December 16th, 2021 in the Hunnerton County Democrat and Trenton Times newspaper.
I believe in the United States of America, the Republic of the States, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and eternal.
We have a roll call?
Roll call. Sean Ellis.
Here.
Tim Gao.
Here.
Brian Pies.
Here.
John Lewis.
Frank Smith.
Trace Petrucci here.
Ryan Perso.
Mike Warner.
Tony Tamarino.
Here.
Clearly, we have it set up with the boys side and the girls. Tracy will only whatever.
Field of their own. All right. So we'll start with the PTO, PTA, and LEF. Do we have anyone from the PTO?
Hi, Michael Strauss from the West Amwell PTO. So our beginning of the school year, I was thinking about this, is you know how when you go into Wawa and there's like the two thing of Reese's Peanut Butter Cups? Ours is the one in the case like this. So we have a really busy beginning of the school year. So already, we've had our break the ice with the kindergarteners last week, and we gave them all snow cones. It was really, really cute. The teacher luncheon is coming up this next week. Don't tell any of the teachers who aren't here today. And then, coming up on Friday, the sixth grade is sponsoring Wildcat Night at the Trenton Thunder, and we sold over 100 tickets. I'm really, really pleased with that. So we're starting off the year really strong with the sixth grade fund. And then we have two back-to-back Fridays of family movie nights. So the first one is going to be an actual real family outdoor movie night, and you can buy pizza and admission on Membership Toolkit. And then we are bringing back drop-off movie nights for the first time since COVID. So that'll be happening on September the 16th. We are excited about that. And the parents of the West Amwell district are even more excited about that. Sixth grade is also sponsoring a family skate night at French Town Roller Rink on September the 24th. And then finally, more info to come on a Wildcat Walk, which will be happening on October 7th. And Trunk or Treat will be happening on 10/28. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm very quick. Hi, I'm Erica Vavron, in case you didn't know, from LAEF tonight. That's my hat I'm wearing tonight. I just wanted to remind everybody that, not West Amwell Golf Day, Golf Day is on October 3rd, and the registration should open on September 3rd, which is a Saturday. And just look out for social media posts from LAEF about registration and sponsorships.
Any questions?
We do not. Hold us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, may I pose? May I abstain? Pass is five zero. All right, welcome, everyone. Our last meeting before we start the new school year, which is a week from tonight. I know it's a little scary. Usually, it's another two weeks or so out, but we are starting a little earlier. I definitely got the feeling today, as we started all of our fall athletics today, we had started football about a week or so ago, and band camp was last week, but then today, everyone was here. So it was busy, and it definitely felt like school again. I have two parts really to my update tonight. The first is I want to give a referendum update. And then the second is I just want to target and highlight some things that was in my letter that I sent out to parents last week, just about some programming changes and additional things that we'll be providing that I'm really excited about this year. So just as we first start about our referendum update, so I want to let you know that our district received an excellent bond rating. So you see there on the bottom, it kind of gives you an overview of the different bond ratings. We were an AA3, and that is from Moody's Investor Service. So that's actually a link that you could click on. I'll send it out tomorrow to all of our community. But in essence, our credit rate. So what happens is that Andrew goes through a pretty extensive process with this organization, where they look at our books and tear through all of our financials and look at all our audits, and then determine where do we fall as far as our rating goes. And we fell literally in a high grade, which is a kudos to our financial department. There's only about two or three vendors that fall into the A, small a, small a, and that is kind of Google, Apple, and some of the other ones, Microsoft, or like the three. So we finished at a really high grade, which I'm excited about. So then we had five different financial institutions that expressed interest in purchasing the bonds. And then we officially sold the bonds last Wednesday, August 17th. And this is the result of the bond sale. So the good news is that we sold the bonds for an interest rate at 3.82%, which is much lower than we thought it would be. If you remember, based on the bond market, in June, I was worried that we were going to be in the 4.5 to 5 range. You can see, and it's a pretty fascinating process. So Andrew and I literally logged in last Wednesday morning at 10:00 of 11 with our financial folks. And there's a portal that you get access to, and there's a clock on it that counts down. And literally, we counted the clock down at 10 minutes. And at the end of 10 minutes, we click on it, and there's a page with results of the interest rates and who bid. And you can see as the names are coming up, who's bidding, but you can't see the interest rate. And you basically get a chart just like this. So obviously, we're going to go with the lowest one. And one thing I do want to point out, when you see that gross interest number, that's based on the full amount. Keep in mind that we are getting state aid, a significant amount of state aid. So you'll see in a second, that's not the total amount of interest that will fall on the taxpayer. It's just the total amount of interest on the entire bonds that were sold that day. So the bonds are sold. We are moving forward, which we're really excited about. For tonight, from the board's perspective, I just have to share this information with you and the community. There's nothing to approve in reference to the bonds, but we are moving forward. And again, our rating really helped us to get a good rate at 3.82%. So if you look at it, interest over the 30 years, now this is on the amount of money that we're actually financing, which is $26,000 and some change. It's $16,883.443, based at the 3.82% is what overall interest over 30 years. The question will probably come up, what would have happened if we sold the bonds in January before the litigation? We were probably looking at more around 3%. Might have been a little bit lower. And then you can kind of see the interest there. So we're looking at a difference of a little over $3 million. Honestly, the concern was, if you remember when I presented in June, it was maybe going to be around $6.5 million. So again, 3.3 is not great, but it's better than 6.5. So that's the positive there as far as the difference with the litigation. But it's really exciting, the fact that we sold the bonds. So if you're not aware, Andrew, we had to keep a close eye on him last Wednesday, because what happens is, in order to bid on a bond, each one of those five companies has to wire $648,000, or else they're not eligible to bid on the bond. So at one point last week, Andrew had about $5.4 million in the bank. But by the end of that same day, they want it back. So the four that didn't get it were on us at about 12 o'clock to say, okay, we didn't win. Where's our $648,000 back? So that's the way that process works. So what does this mean? And this is something I'll post as well. We just did a comparison to kind of see, like, if we would have sold the bonds at 3% back in January, this is what you were looking at. And this is based on the average assessment in each one of our municipalities at 3.82%. You can see it's a little bit more in how much it is per year. But we did update our tax calculators. So our tax calculators, which you'll see on the next slide, and keep in mind, this is all based on the average, you know, assessment that you see in that one column there for each municipality. Obviously, if your house is assessed at more of that, then it's going to be higher. If it's less than that, then it's going to be less. But that's basically the way now, this is final, the numbers play out moving forward. And again, as I mentioned, Andrew updated our calculators this morning. They're on our website under the referendum tab. And if you want to click in and just get an idea of how much, based on your assessment, which you can see on your tax bill, the referendum is going to cost you. You are able to do that using these two calculators. You know, just something to keep in mind, because of the timing of it, and when we're selling the bonds, we will not start paying back on this until July of next year, so July of '23. So that does, the positive there is it does lessen the blow where we're paying both referendum debts. The one from 2005, which is due to roll out in 2026, and then the one now for our new project. So a little bit less time where we're paying double the debt. But that gives you an idea if you want to see what it looks like. So something else I want to share that we've been investigating, and this actually is on the agenda for this evening. So right, we got $33,412,000. So it's like, what are we going to do with that money? We, as a district, we can invest that money. And then what happens is, our architect draws up what's called a payout or drawdown schedule. So in other words, when are we going to have to pay the contractor? What's that going to look like over the period of two years? What can happen is, we can take that money and invest it and make interest on it. Probably six months ago, it wouldn't have been worth it, but now it is. And obviously, you know, we can put that money in the fund, and then the investor that we go with can set out to pay when we have to pay out. And then whatever's money's left is to continue and invest it. So we had, Andrew and I had a meeting to talk about this with an organization called New Jersey Asset and Rebate Program. So just so you know, it's, they only do business with school districts and municipalities. So obviously, it's very, very safe. It's not uncommon to be able to do that. Some other districts that have utilized our services, Princeton, West Windsor, Delaware Township, Lawrence Township, Hamilton Township, and others. But just to give you a few. And basically, what happens is, any proceeds generated from this investment can be used towards a referendum if we needed it, or to pay down our debt service, which obviously can lessen the impact on our taxpayers. So we'll see how that plays out. They did an initial projection of what they think we could maybe make an interest. But again, it all depends on the market. And like I said, you know, probably six months to a year ago, they would have said it wouldn't even have been worth it. But now, it is beneficial for us to do this. So that is on our agenda tonight, under our finance section, is to approve a resolution so we can enter into an agreement with these folks. And then as soon as we have the money in our account, which will be probably right in the beginning of September, around the 8th, we'll be able to take that, invest it immediately. And probably, you know, the way it goes, we really won't be paying anything out for the referendum for several months. So obviously, that's when the full amount will be in there for us to collect interest. So we've been talking a lot about this as a board. We really want to transition away from the word referendum into the words school construction, because that's where we're going. We're past the referendum. We passed the referendum. Now it's all about construction, what that's going to look like. So I wanted to kind of flesh out for you what the timeline is going to look like over the next year. So both of our projects right now have been with the Department of Education for the last several weeks. It's a pretty extensive review process. It usually takes about two to three months. So we expect that it'll be approved by October 1st. Realize we do a lot of preliminary work on the front end with that, with our architects and our engineers, so that it goes through pretty smoothly. We also have to go through the DCA, Department of Consumer Affairs. We did a preliminary review with them in early July, where they kind of looked at everything. It wasn't the official review, but pointed out certain things. Have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? We kind of cleaned all that up. And now we'll go back to them in September. And that process and that review doesn't take too long. That will probably only take a few weeks. Our plan is to go out to bid on both projects in November. So in other words, we put everything out, and then we have an actual bid opening, probably will take place in this room, where contractors provide a sealed bid. And we come in, and there's a whole process that Andrew has to go through. There's a whole process that the contractors have to go through to make sure that there's a lot of documentation that they have to fill out. And if they fill out anything incorrectly, they're disqualified. So what happens is, we literally open up all the bid openings, because they're sealed, and verify that everything was done the right way and all the forms are filled out. And then at that point, we award the bid for the jobs. More than likely, we'll probably have two different contractors bid on each jobs, because there are different tiers, right? There's a contractor that kind of deals with the $10 to $12 million project, and then another realm of contractor that deals with the $20 million project. So it will probably be two different contractors, and we'll go through that process. And hopefully, by, you know, if not the November board meeting, the December board meeting, we'll be able to bring that to the board for board approval, depending upon who the contractors are. So that's something that, you know, obviously, we're excited about. You know, the fact that it's kind of quelled a little bit in the last couple of weeks, two weeks maybe, but there's been a lot of talk about recession. That could help us to a certain extent. I know it doesn't help the economy, but contractors have a tendency to get nervous when they hear the word recession, and they want to lock in work, maybe for the next couple of years, because they're worried about finding work. So sometimes, they have a tendency to give more beneficial bids to make sure they get that work. So perhaps that could play out for advantage moving forward. And then from there, we anticipate shovels in the ground end of January for the 5.8 building, and getting started on that building with a completion date of June 2024. The renovation of LPS into a district pre-K 4 building will begin in June 2023, with a completion date of 2024 June. Students in LPS School will be relocated next year to St. John's School for the 23-24 school year. We've been spending a lot of time on that. We spent a lot of time as an administrative team on that this summer, of all the, you know, planning from A to Z that goes into that move and what that looks like. And we've worked on that throughout the entire year. And then finally, you know, we're looking at reconfiguration of our district in September of 2024. So literally, two years from now, hopefully, fingers crossed, with construction, we would be starting out with a new district configuration for that 2024, 2025 school year. So it's exciting, really exciting. And I, you know, my letter to staff last week, and they come back on Wednesday this week, I said, this is a good time to be a staff member in South Hunnerton, because this is really exciting for you, of the facilities that you're finally going to get that you deserve and our kids deserve. And you're part of that process. Many of them have been part of the design process since January of last year, and they will continue to be so moving forward. And it's going to be really cool to see this all come together. So before I move on to like kind of my school update for this year, is there any questions from the board on this portion of my update?
I just want to say, I think it's great that the financial team had the foresight to go after the, you know, interest while we're waiting on all of this. And it is really exciting time. So kudos to you and everyone involved.
Yeah, a couple of people have said to me recently, within the last week, like, this is really going to happen. We didn't think it was gonna, but it is. And it's exciting. So kudos to the board. Absolutely. All right. So just for the school year, a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Again, as I mentioned, a week from today, we start school, which is earlier. There's a link on here for the district calendar. Just remember, some changes here. First off, we don't have, typically in November and March, we would have a full day staff development in-service day. We did away with that this year because we're compressing the calendar to try to get out earlier. So we have half days. So those days now, where students would typically be all for the entire day, they're going to have school and run a half-day schedule, and then we're going to do professional development with our staff in the afternoon. Because again, we are trying to save those days in the calendar. And then just a reminder, our last day of school, and I know it seems like so far away, but you know how that goes, is June 7th. So it is earlier than it normally is. I've had a couple conversations from parents, just concerned a little bit about next summer and childcare and camps, because we're getting done sooner than we typically would. I want to know that, I want you to know that I have reached out and had some conversations with, for example, the Y and even Lambeville Academy. And I know absolutely the Y is on board with running programming like that, those first two weeks after we get out, in case parents are in a bind. We're going to talk about it. More than likely, it would happen here. Obviously, it's not going to happen at LPS. Or, you know, students and the parents have childcare issues before all the camp circuit kind of starts during the summer. So more information on that. But you have access to the calendar. And then just some things that are really important that I wanted to highlight, because I think we're doing a lot of really neat stuff this year to support our students. So this has been been a big topic of conversation. This Wednesday and Thursday, we're literally training all of our staff that deals with students ages 12 to 18 in youth mental health first aid training, which is kind of the best you can get, right? It's an extensive process. It requires two hours of online training, and then a full day of in-person training. We have teachers, counselors, secretaries, bus drivers, anyone who, inter paraprofessionals, anyone who's interacting on a daily basis with students is going to be part of this training. I completed my online portion today, the two hours, and it was really good. And I'm looking forward to the in-person. And it's, I think it's going to give some really valuable tools to our teachers, because we know that unfortunately, in our society right now, this is what our students are facing, right? The numbers are at an all-time high, the number of clinicians that are available at an all-time low as far as availability of services. So the more at the ground level that we can identify certain situations and know what to do with that, is going to be really important. And that is the skills that our staff is going to get. So I'm really excited that even before kids walk through the door, we're going to complete all that training in advance, which is great. And it's free, by the way. It is free. So, you know, I've been sharing this with some of my colleagues, because the Department of Human Services got a five-year grant to do youth mental health first aid training for anyone. So and I don't know if a lot of people are aware of that, at least in my circles or not. So it's definitely worthwhile. And down the road, we're going to do some additional, probably with some of our administrative team and some other folks in key positions for the adult version, right? Because obviously, dealing with adults every day and some of those different people are important. So if you remember last spring, we talked a lot about partnering with Rutgers Behavioral Health to get a mental health clinician. And quite honestly, it was challenging for them to find a clinician that was willing to come to Hunnerton County. I was going back and forth, and you remember, we hoped that we were going to start with a clinician, you know, in April or May. That never happened. They ran a couple of evening programs for parents. And then I really needed a guarantee for September, right? And I made a decision in July, I can't, I have to deliver on this. This is non-negotiable. So they were concerned. It was a little bit of long communication, and I decided we need to go with a plan B. So I reached out to an organization called First Children. They're located in South Jersey. Our new Director of People's Services, Dr. Naismith, has had experience with them in the past in some previous districts he worked in. And we brought them in. We talked to them. It's the same service we were going to get from Rutgers, and they can provide us with a clinician. Honestly, I actually got an email on Friday from the director saying they're pretty sure they have someone who might even be able to start us early Monday next week, which would be awesome. So we will have a clinician who's just dedicated their main job. It's going to have a caseload of students, quite honestly, that we're most concerned about. And beyond individual therapy, there'll be family therapy as well. And it could be evenings, weekends, during the school day, as well as really being a conduit for outside resources. So and if we get in a situation, and I hope we don't, but if we do, where students really are beyond our level of care, and we need to kind of bridge those outside resources, that person's going to be the main focal point to do that for us. So this is a huge get for us. And again, as we look to support our students, this is going to be a great resource. And this individual will work very closely with our counseling team, very closely with our child study team, and very closely with our administrative team. Weekly meetings, case monitoring, case management, all the way through. So that's going to be a great, you know, new program for us. And then, we're just not in the business anymore of monitoring academics. That has just changed in the landscape of education. That used to be the way it was. We're not anymore. We really truly are now in the business of the whole child. So we are going to be administering benchmarks, just like we do in math, and just like we do in language arts, in social emotional learning, and having some kids do some self-assessing on their own. And for us, we're going to be able to build a database and drive programming around those results. So I'm really excited about that. It's a program called Satchel Pulse. We're going to be doing some training with staff on it in the beginning of the school year, and then looking We're going to be doing some training with staff on it in the beginning of the school year and then looking to launch our first benchmarks in the fall and the beginning of October. And then do them two more times throughout the year. And it's going to allow us to track student progress the entire time throughout the district and drive our resources and things that we need for students as far as support. So again, uh, we truly are about developing the whole child. It's not just about academics anymore in education. And then our therapy dog program, which I'm hoping you saw the pictures in my letter that I sent out. Tomorrow is our first graduation. All right. So the first round of training, we all graduate tomorrow and we move on to the next round. We're a little nervous because we got to take our test tomorrow and we're not allowed to use treats for the first time. So no, no food, right, Andrew? So, uh, but we'll be all right. And then we move on. I've mentioned it before, it's an intense program. We started on July 19th and we do not get certified until May of 2023. And that's every Tuesday for an hour. So we have nine staff members in our district that have dedicated almost an entire year every Tuesday for an hour. And when school starts, it will be after school from four to 5:00 PM. But so far it's been a really meaningful program. The trainers have been awesome and our dogs have been great. There was a lot of folks that were worried about their dogs, but even our dog trainer made a comment saying, this is one of the best group of dogs that I've ever worked with. Calm and everyone doing what they need to do. So we're really excited about that. The goal will be that we will have a therapy dog in every building, every day. We'll rotate the staff. We're balanced among the nine, so we're covered at all of our buildings. Probably after the new year, we'll start to ease some of the dogs in for some certain things that they'll be doing until eventually, you know, we'll have a rotation set up. Well, there'll be a dog every day, which is great. Just some safety and security updates. So I sent some information about our campus safety officers, which are, are ready to go. It's our same folks that served in the class three roles last year. All of their uniforms just came in today. So they're literally laying in a pile on my table, ready to give out when they come in on the 24th. So we're excited about that. Something else I, I wanted to point out, um, and this was actually jump passed into law by the governor, although we did push back and now it's for 2324, not 2223. But we were kind of ahead of this already. We had started this process last spring. Now every district is required to have a threat assessment team. And what that means is it's made up of mental health clinicians, you know, a building administrator, teachers, um, and more than likely a nurse as well. Our campus safety officers will be on it as well. And if there's a threat that's made in any capacity, whether it's during in our school buildings or if it's outside social media, whatever it may be, we will now have to, and there's a training and a format and a protocol that we'll use, analyze that threat and then case manage that threat. Being that if that student for whatever reason needs services based on some mental health things that are already shared, we put those in the ax and some family support, whatever it may be. And we kind of monitor that and continue to case manage that route. So that's a new feature. We are going to be implementing that this year, even though we don't have to, we will be implementing it this year. And then you'll notice, you know, colored lanyards. So one thing that was really important and came out in our safety review is that our staff and everyone's identified by a colored lanyard. So if you're a staff member, it's one color. If you're a visitor, it's another color. If you're a substitute, it's another color, whatever it may be. You'll see folks with these so you know visually, without even looking at the ID, why are they in the building? And if there's nothing on, then that brings up a question. We're in the process of having all of our buses installed with cameras. So the hope would be by October, um, that will be the case. We installed four additional pin pads at LPS. West Amwell already has them, but LPS was all key-based, which I don't like because one, it takes, you know, time to get a key in the door. And two, if you lose a key, then you're rekeying the entire building. So we now have pin pads with codes. They're up and running. It's a temporary solution. When we go to the new buildings and the, and the reconfiguration, we'll have all cameras, door swipes, what IDs. But for the 2223 school year for LPS, we wanted to increase those pin pads if we really didn't have them. And then hot off the press, this is something else that just came out. Had a conversation this morning about this. We will be offering a gun safety workshop. It's called be smart and smart is an acronym, which I'll share more information about it. It's going to be via Zoom and on, on October 19th at 7:00 PM. It's an organization that, uh, I think will do a great job, um, just to really realizing that we obviously we have folks to have guns, um, in houses and making sure that we're doing everything safe as far as our kids are concerned. So definitely something that we'll promote it more as we get closer to the date, but that's locked in right now. And then just COVID. So, you know, it's still here, right? As much as we hope that it's not, but it is. And I sent out an update. Here's a link to it. It's also on our COVID-19 link on our website. The only difference now is that, you know, back in July and then just most recently with the CDC, early July, it was the New Jersey Health Department. Kind of for school districts said no more contact tracing, um, unless there's an outbreak. And typically an outbreak is defined of three or more cases that are directly tied together specifically. You know, obviously we're going to continue to monitor. We're following the same rules where if a student tests positive for COVID, right? They're going to be out of school for five days and then hopefully come back on day six and wear a mask, day six to 10. Our kids and staff are more than welcome to wear masks, just like they were last year. We went mask optional, which I'm sure we'll have folks that will. And then, you know, all of our same cleaning protocols and all that are still in play like we've done in the past. I think regardless of whether that's COVID, the one thing we kind of learn beyond COVID, like for flu and everything else, I think is it's a good practice, right? Cause it helped us. So we'll keep all that in play and, uh, we'll kind of see where things go. Just a reminder to parents that it's really helpful for our nurses if they have the most up-to-date information about vaccinations. So if you can, you know, if you have information that's changed since last year, boosters or whatever it may be, take a picture of that card and email it to your school nurse. And that way they can keep it on file and it just makes things a lot easier for them. You know, if there is an issue with COVID. So check out that slide deck that I sent out my letter or it'll be linked in this presentation if, if there's any questions. And obviously if there's any changes, I'll keep you updated, but right now that's how we're starting the school year. So this is something I'm excited about as well because we've talked a lot about, you know, equity and making sure that all of our students have access to all of our activities. So we are going to be running late buses for all of our seven 12 students. And we're going to start that as early as one week from today on August 29th. We're going to run the late buses Monday through Thursday to start the year. We're really going to kind of get an idea to see how this plays out. You know, I think in the beginning may not be as many kids just because it'll only be athletics. Our clubs and activities typically don't start probably till about mid-September or so. So we're going to see how that plays out. The late buses will leave each day by 5:15 PM. If you're a student who lives outside of the district, you will also have access to a late bus. So this is not just for students who live inside of our district, but students who live outside as well. If you're an athlete and transportation's an issue, you will be excused from practice at 5:00 PM. So you can make that 5:15 late bus. The way we're going to do it is all of our seven 12 students are going to get an ID this year, right? A photo ID. There's going to be a barcode on that ID. They can use it to buy lunch. So instead of, they can still use the pin pad, but sometimes that takes a little bit more time. It's, it's easier to scan and go right through rather than what's the pin pad? So we're trying to speed up the lines. They can use it for that. They're also going to use it for the late buses. So when they get on a late bus, you're just going to walk on the bus. There's going to be a scanner right there. They scan in, that just helps us kind of keep track of who's on the late bus, who's not. And it's, you know, the only way we're going to get our kids to carry these is if there's a need for it. So obviously the late bus, the lunch, which is important, is a big need. For seven 12 clubs, right? For our students from seven to 12, once we start running our clubs, clubs typically run from three to four. We're going to have a supervised study hall from four to 5:00 PM. So let's say you're a student, I want to do, you know, whatever club it may be, but I don't have a ride at four o'clock. What do I do? You can do the club and then you can hang out from four to five. There'll be a teacher in a supervised study hall and you can walk out at five o'clock and get on the bus at 5:15 if you're able to go home. So late buses will drop off in central locations for students who live outside the district, Stockton and Lambertville. So what we're thinking for outside the district, we have about five or six designated stops. And I'm going to share this all with parents tomorrow in communication. For Lambertville and Stockton, what we're thinking is we're literally probably going to go down Main Street and drop off on Main Street at each end street. And kind of as we go down, depending upon, you know, how things play out, who's on the bus that day. West Amwell, the majority of it will be door to door because of hazardous conditions, right? When we pull in, whether it's Music Mountain or Hunterdon Hills, right? Is that it? Yeah, that development, that could be a little different where we pull in and maybe just drop off because it's, you know, you're in a development. But the majority of the rest of West Amwell, there's not sidewalks, things like that. So a lot of it's going to be door to door. And again, it depends on who's on the bus that day, how that kind of all played out. So that's the way it will work. And as like anything else, we're going to do it. And then if we got to make tweaks along the way, we'll make tweaks. We'll see how things are going. If we're not getting as much usage by the end of September, maybe we cut it down to two days a week, just on the club days. We're all going to kind of, this will be a, you know, an ongoing analysis to kind of see what works and what doesn't work. But there shouldn't be any students that said, I can't do an activity because I don't have transportation. I don't want that to happen. I want any student who wants to do something to be able to do it. And if they can, it's not because they don't have a ride. That's really, really important. So I'm excited about that. All right. Any questions from the board?
No questions, but oh my gosh. This is awesome. So congratulations on so many accomplishments that you've just accomplished for the upcoming year and the future. So thank you.
And it's our staff and our men team have put in a ton of work and the board. This is, you know, your vision as well. So you need to pay credit for it as well, just much. All right.
All right. All right, we will now have the first, um, open public comment. And okay. Open to the public comment for comment on any items on the agenda. Just a reminder before we start public comment, we have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during public comment. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period for public comment, the member of the board charged with running the public meeting shall warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during, during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruption, disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption and use of profanity or comments seen as abusive, obscene or defamatory. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name and municipality. Public comment is now open.
Hi, I'm Sherida Durkey from Lambertville. First I wanted to say thank you for the comprehensive review and everything sounds wonderful. I'm really excited about, um, all of the things, the youth mental health first aid training. I was wondering about the Rutgers Behavioral Health and I'm really glad to have somebody coming in. I was curious about that. If just a question, if, if it's our own clinician, is that somebody who's in the district every day? Do they have an office here? Okay, cool. Um, also be smart. I'm really glad that you're doing that. I know about that program. It's wonderful. And the late buses is so important. Been thinking about that for a long time. I'm really glad and, and to see that it is leaving at 5:15 and the study hall is all great. I think that is a really important part of equity. And obviously we want as many of our kids as possible to be able to participate in activities. And so I just wanted to, to throw out to the board, um, something to think about. I've been thinking for a long time that it would be really great if we did not have the activity fee. It's a hundred dollars for one child, family cap at $200. And I know that brings in some money, but, and I know that it would be waived if that's a financial hardship for your family. But when I think of myself, um, having been a teenager, um, if I thought that my parents, if that, that that would be a hardship, I don't think I would have asked them if I could play. And I also, you know, because of pride, um, if I thought that would be a financial hardship for my family, I don't think I would go to the school and, and ask them either. So, um, even though I, it is a decent amount of money. I mean, it's not that much. And so hopefully that's just something that we could think about because again, get as many kids, we should be doing everything in our power to get them into activities. And, um, the last thing I wanted to say is the Satchel Pulse, um, to be honest, when I saw that in your, your email, I am so supportive of social emotional learning. I know it's so important. I sort of had alarm bells go off because I was like, wait a second, I'm not sure I want you tracking all this data on my kid. And also because I think with, with so much of what social emotional learning, um, it, I went on the website and it's, it's kind of, it looks like there's many different ways that this can be implemented by the district. Um, and I guess though I was thinking if I, if I were a kid and I was having trouble with, you know, making friends or, you know, things like that, that I wouldn't really want to make myself vulnerable and then not have somebody follow. And so I guess I'm interested in more information about that program, how our district will actually implement it. So I wasn't sure. I was thinking of writing an email and would that be to you? Would that be to Mr. Hewitt or the behavioral health team? I mean, I'm just, I would like more information. So I'm wondering how I would get it.
Actually it'd be Mr. Naismith.
Okay.
Our new director of people services.
Okay. So how do you spell?
N-E-S-M-I-T-H.
Okay.
James and then period.
Got it. All right.
And you can copy me on it too.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I'm Caleb Burishaw, West Amwell. I'm going to be very brief because ironically that's the two points I wanted to address. It was just brought to my attention, I just found out, not really brought to my attention. That sounds devious, but about the activity fee. And I was really rather shocked. I know that some districts have been forced to do that when budgets don't allow yada, yada. And I guess I'm curious, like how? How, how are we at a point where, you know, when I came to school here, I was in 17 activities at a time. That's financially irresponsible for my parents, but it's what made me who I am today because of that foundation and that availability. And, you know, I'm, I'm listening to the bus and I'm turning around, looking at Mr. Hewitt going, this is also great. But it's what, you know, why, why do we have to pay to participate in these things? I trust that there is a good reason. I totally do. I'm not, you know, denigrating that, but I'm curious about it and I would love to actually learn more. If it brings value, great. If it's just revenue, I'm not so sure about that. I don't think it's that way, but I'm curious. Um, and then, you know, the second piece was I love the idea of the social emotional tracking. And in doing so, we then normalize to our kids over time that it's okay to express how you feel. It'll take time, sure. But my real big question is what happens then, right? I know what we do with benchmark testing in the academic arena. And it promotes, it retains, it laterals, it identifies, it does different things. How do we use this to the evolvement of the kid, right? And, and how do we include the parents and what is the, what's the reach there? So anyway, that's the gist of it. Really kind of like, I love the touchy feely stuff, but I'm also grounded in reason. So I'd like to see where we're kind of heading there. So should have backed up. Amazing. All of those things are amazing, fully supportive, but have a few questions. And thank you. It's nice to see you guys again.
You know, just a, a couple of things I'll say with the activity fee and Jim, you might have a history of it more than I do, but I know, I don't.
I'm not sure of this because this is, but I, my guess is the activity fee probably came in at the same time that the late buses went away. We used to provide late buses here, right? Because that's what we're going to do. In around 2009, 2010, uh, the, uh, the Board of Education, and again, we were four separate districts at the time in the South. Hundred and seven through 12 districts budget kept failing. And when a budget fails, okay, when, and that, at the time voters in New Jersey voted for budgets. I'm sorry, I don't mean to make this longer than it has to be, but, but the, but the voters would vote down the budgets. Okay. And there was like, there was actually a sort of a concerted effort from people who lived in Lambertville, who were driving this, voting down the budgets because they felt that the per pupil expenditure here at South Hunter was too high. So on a per pupil cost, South Hunter doesn't look great because we have very few pupils, right? But it costs X amount to get the bus up and running. The more people you put on the bus, you know, the better those costs look. So, um, at one point the Lambertville, well, the municipal governments, Lambertville was kind of a leader in this. And they, um, basically required the school district to cut about a million and a half dollars out of the budget. So we had to do a lot of things that we, I wasn't on the board at the time, but that board had to do a lot of things that, um, you know, basically cut back. We got rid, at that time, we got rid of some administrative positions. We got rid of, um, department heads to save time. We, they changed the scheduling, um, to save money and they eliminated late buses was one of the things that they did. That I have a feeling that the activity fee may have come in at that time also. Again, it doesn't bring in a huge amount of revenue, about 2010. And in fact, so now here's the positive of that. One, as, as part of that, all of us from these local school districts, as part of this, that was where people started. We had been working, there was a group of us who'd been working toward school regionalization, going back to 2006 or 2007. But there was a group formed in 2010, we called it the School Worker Group. And we met when we involved local members of the municipalities and, you know, board members and community members. And that was kind of the thing that ended up driving to where we could regionalize the schools. And so now we're seeing the benefits of regionalization, which is that we actually have, we're in a financial position where we're bringing back late buses, right? Where we have gotten back our department heads. We have changed our scheduling again for the better, right? We're improving, we're trying to make improvements. Every year, we're trying to make it better. So.
And we're getting high ratings.
And I think, yeah, well, you know, it's, obviously there's always work in progress. So, so that's kind of the wheel. So it's a 10-year process. Now that said.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would follow up and say, you know, good time maybe for the board to look at that.
Right.
We dig into it. Financially, it's how much does it actually generate, which quite honestly, I don't have off my head. And then from there, you know, is it worth it? And what would be the impact program wise without having that much?
And I, you know.
Finance committee can look at and then.
Time to evaluate it and say, maybe, you know, unfortunately, a little late for me. I've been paying a hundred bucks every year since my kids were in the seventh grade, but that's fine. No, that's okay, you know? But, but I will, I will say, and Mr. Durkey mentioned, you know, we don't, we have never required, if people can't pay it, they, they're waiving that, they're letting them go. They're, they're not, no, it is not meant as a barrier to anybody. I don't think it is ever, I'm not gonna say it hasn't been a barrier. I can't speak to the examples that you gave, but I will say that I think most kids who want to play sports, their parents are supportive of it. They're, I'm, we were totally willing to pay 200 bucks a year for my two kids to play in their sports and stuff like that. And it's one thing, right? Not, it's not a hundred dollars every activity. It is a hundred dollars a year to participate in its 17 activities. So that's, that is not gonna break. Right? So, you know, but again, a hundred, you know, we have, you know, 400 students here. So, you know, at most, we're not, we're not bringing in a huge amount of money there. So, but it does help to offset some of the costs of running these programs. We are spending money on coach stipends. We are, we do buy equipment and things like that. So, but let's put it on the finance and those bottom. Sorry, I didn't mean to go over long there with this.
And then your second question, what I'll just say about that is probably, Jeff and I, James can work on a more formal presentation on the satchel pulse. But I'll tell you kinda where we, why we are where we are today is we've been doing a lot of work in SEL for probably five, six years now. It's hard to assess kinda where we are. Obviously, when you're talking about benchmarks, and I know it can be apples and oranges. When we're talking about academic areas, it gives you a little bit more ideas to know whether or not what you're doing is actually working. As we see, you know, unfortunately suicidal ideations increase, as we see more and more kids, you know, that need support, we had just talked about, is there measures out there for us to be able to at least collect some data to know what we're doing is actually working or are there other areas that we need to focus on? So again, like I said, I think it's important where we can share more information, but that's kind of our strategy behind it that we talked about as an administrative team, is really to be able to target that area as well to say, all right, from a programming perspective, are we hitting where we need to hit based on what our needs are of our kids? And if we're not, then we need some data to tell us that and then go in another direction. But we'll formalize something and put it out.
To make sure that it's clear, the interventions are about identifying patterns and broader programming, not individual interventions for students that are, that have, that are being assessed. So I think that was what I heard.
Yeah, and I mean, depending upon what the self-assessment, if some, if the student identifies something significant in that self-assessment, it is gonna raise a red flag. And it is something that obviously we could provide for a specific individual, for example, or a mental health condition who's gonna be with us, you know, five days a week and 12 months out of the year, including summer. You know, maybe that's someone who needs more visual services.
Anyone else for public comments? And this, this portion of public comment will be closed. There will be another one at the end. Move on to the reports. Thank you.
So Diana's report addressed a number of things that Tony kind of went over. She talked about first child services, replacing the run for healthcare help. One note is that will continue to be paid for by grant funds. Other contracts up for approval will be tools of mine, which is pre-k curriculum and professional development, which is also gonna be funded by the preschool, which is gonna be funded by the preschool exchange aid. And the other contract there is D and B Service Group, which maintains our middle school, high school HVAC, which fortunately, which went down for a week and came back online on Thursday of last year. Holborn Construction should start shortly after Labor Day and take about five weeks. She also talked about New Jersey Harbor, which Tony already explained. And highlighted that the auditors are in for the final round of their annual review of the 2122 school year this week. So they started today and will be here until Thursday. Transportation updates, we're waiting for final pieces. So the bus cameras can be installed and personally, they have stuff in the supply chain, like so many things. But we do anticipate that all cameras will be upgraded in all of our vehicles at the fair use. And we also anticipate having the bus that we ordered March of last year finally rolling off the Sunday line with air conditioning sometime in the next two weeks. And she highlighted late bus run, which Tony got into in great detail. Cafeteria updates, reminder, we will not be offering free lunches for all students. This was done in 21, 2021 and 2122. But the current prices for meals has been posted and students who are eligible for reduced lunches will be given lunch in the free, so free reduced lunch will all be free.
And just to follow up, sorry Andrew to interrupt you. So hopefully tomorrow, I'll be sending out information about free and reduced lunch applications. We realize this is something where folks have not had to deal with this for several years now because of COVID. So, and it's not the easiest process, full disclosure, it's not. So we're trying to do everything we can to help support families. So we have a video that will be going out, it's a screencastified video in English and in Spanish, which literally walks people through how to fill out the application. And then we are gonna set up designated times where folks can come to the building, whether it's here, West Danwell or LPS. And we'll actually have somewhere, someone there who will literally sit down and do the application with them to help try to support that the best they possibly can, because it's not an easy process.
And then last was the school construction update, which Tony and I already. Other items that are up for approval are just the yearly approval of the use and temporary facilities plan, our bond council legal services, our out of district student placement contracts. Oh, and an additional highlight that I'd like to highlight is, one of our new maintenance personnel, Alan Albiner has identified many items around the district that we no longer have use for, but still have value and put them up for bid on something called municipal. And was successful and we are approving the sale of up to $4,500, $4,500 worth of materials. And then we have additional bits that are gonna go up for auction this month as well. So just wanted to highlight his efforts and, you know, additional ways of bringing in revenue is always great.
Here's your activity.
And that's it, but I can't bring that for.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve item A through L and M.
Good discussion.
I would just note that our bond counsel, Andrew can confirm this, but this is the firm that we are firing as bond counsel, the same people that did every referendum, that have worked with every referendum that we bonded in the last 20 some years, including the West Danwell, 2001 at the elementary school, South 100 here in 2005, and Stockton in 2008. They are people who know the district. I don't, it's not the same counsel, the same woman who was the counsel for those. But, you know, it is a firm that is very familiar with us and so I'm happy to see that they're still working.
Sean Ellis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yep.
Brian Hughes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And running time rate?
Yes.
Personnel?
I'll do personnel. So a couple of things I just wanted to mention. And if you're not aware of this, there is a crisis right now, not only in the state of New Jersey, but across our country with educators. It's really scary. We are fortunate that we're just about fully staffed, but I can tell you, there are a lot of districts around us that are not and still don't know what they're gonna do going into the first day of school because they do not, they don't have enough teachers to cover classes. So I was, I think I was sharing this with some members of the board. I was reading an article the other day where there's a district not too far from here, across the bridge, it's literally paying for kids to take college classes because they don't have teachers to teach them in their high school, which is kinda crazy. So just something to be aware of, there's been a lot of legislation, you know, to try to help with the process of teacher certification, but it's something that we're keeping an eye on. And then the other thing is bus drivers. If you've seen me send out many, you know, postings about we need drivers and you'll notice on here, there's some unique names that are being approved right there for bus driver training because we're literally trying to get as creative as we possibly can. So these are folks that are on this list, are teachers and coaches, and they're also some of our maintenance staff. So they've come to us to say, listen, you know, I worked during a school day for our maintenance team, but I'm willing to help with driving a bus after school hours when my shift ends. Or I'm a coach and worst case scenario, we got a game and I'm, you know, I have a CDL, I could drive the team, obviously get paid to do that, but drive the team to the game. And this is kinda where we are right now because every district is facing this. And then what we're trying, what we're actually doing is just stealing them from each other, which makes it even more difficult because there's such a shortage. So these are two areas that we discussed in personnel, that we're keeping a close eye on. You know, kudos to Andrew and for our existing bus drivers for pitching in and doing everything we possibly need to do for us to be able to start the school year so all of our routes are covered. We gotta get creative and also be able to help with late buses. And we're even thinking some of these folks on this list will be able to maybe help with some of our late buses depending upon the day. So it's, it's a tough situation now with these two areas. And I don't know, I don't think, there's no light at the end of the tunnel right now, but hopefully down the road, things will get a little bit better. If you know anyone who wants to drive a bus, send them my way, please. We'll pay for the training and we'll train them. That's all I have for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item B.
I have a quick second question.
How about we make a second motion and then we'll talk.
I'll second.
Discussion?
So I was just curious about, and I'm sorry, I missed the committee meeting on a conflict for last week. So I didn't get the full info on this, but so Melissa Richardson's resigning as the Secretary of Transportation. Is someone, anyone replacing her?
Not yet. It's posted. Okay, so you know a transportation secretary? Okay. So right now, the plan is for her to do both jobs. She'll probably help us out, kinda like she was doing last year, but we, we've made the, you know, dedication to the board that we really feel as though it's important to have a full-time person in there and not trying to drive a bus and do that job at the same time.
Yeah, just to explain, you know, piggyback on that, up until this year, we have, she has, she has been both a driver and we have had a basically a part, we've just given her extra duties to, to manage the bus routes and stuff like that. And we're, we decided last year that we were at the point where we need a full-time person. So she is gonna stay with the district as a driver, which is great.
Okay.
I'll start with Gallo.
Yes.
Brian Hughes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Brian is up for reading on?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Let's acknowledge the hero in the, in the audience, the favorite bus driver coming back. Just when you thought you were out, we pull you back in. I dig it. Right? That's it. Okay.
Curriculum and technology?
Curriculum and Technology Committee met last Thursday. We have a couple of items on the agenda for approval. In fact, I'll go ahead and make, I'll just make a motion to approve item A and then I will talk about this.
Second.
Thank you very much. So we are, the board committee is recommending for approval this evening, the updated health curriculum for grade seven through 12. That curriculum was written by four teachers in our district. It has been updated and we've discussed this numerous times over the last few, basically the last six months of meetings. It's been updated to comply with the New Jersey's New Health and Physical Education Student Learning Standards, which were originally issued in the 2021 school year and are required to be implemented by the end of this year, 2022. So we have, there was a information, so I would say first of all, there is a lot of, there's information and misinformation that is out there, okay, about this on, in public. I encourage you to go online to our website and Mr. Suso and Mr. Hewitt held an informational session on June the 1st. That was, it was a public meeting, but it was also recorded. There's also a accompanying, you know, deck of information that explains the standards, explains what is being, you know, what is being added and, and why. So I encourage you to go onto that on our website and look and take a look at that. The, if you go to our website, South 100 website, for those of you, for the vast crowd at watching at home, I'm sure you are, if you go to the website, go to the four, there's a, there are a group of tabs across the top, go to the four parents tab, click on, if you click on that, you'll see one that's maybe the third one down that says curriculum, assessment, and instruction, parent information. If you click on that, it will be the first, the top item, the most recent item in that list. And you will be able to see that presentation. There is in my minutes, which I don't know if they're posted, but they will be by tomorrow morning, there is a direct link. So if you go to the curriculum minutes that I'm looking at tonight, you can click on that link and go right there. This curriculum, once it is approved this evening, the curriculum will be posted on the district's website. So you can take a look. The administration, Mr. Suso, will be discussing the, the curriculum among, the health curriculum among many other things during back to school night, which will be September the 14th at 6 o'clock here at the school. Back to school night, by the way, will be also live streamed and recorded. For those who cannot make the meeting, you can either watch at home or you can watch it the next day or whenever. And finally, I would note that as has been said numerous times, parents, if you have concerns or you would prefer to discuss certain topics in the privacy of your own home, you have the right to opt out of the health education program. So that is one that we are bringing forward for approval tonight for the board. We are also bringing forward three other pieces of curriculum. One is for the middle school academy program. One is for the high school life-centered education program. And the other, and the third is the K through 12 visual and performing media arts program. So the committee is recommending that all of those be approved by the board this evening. I'm gonna hit a few other highlights just to piggyback off of some of Mr. Suso's report. Our technology department has spent the summer preparing Chromebooks, refreshing them so that they're ready for the students when they come back to school next week. This is our fourth year, we bought these, this will be the fourth year that we will have used this particular group of Chromebooks. Okay, so they are basically at the end of their, this is probably the last year we expected, we hope to get four years out of them. This is the last year of their useful life. So we will be looking to purchase new Chromebooks next year. Because of their age and because they are starting to break down at a little bit higher rate, the district is doing something different this year. We have, we have insured, we have purchased insurance for every Chromebook. It's costing the district about $16,000 to do that. In the past, the past three years, parents have paid the insurance at about $20, $21 per Chromebook. They had that option to buy insurance, which was, by the way, if you have a clumsy kid like mine, it is a very worthwhile investment. But in any case, that's gonna be covered this year just so that if things are breaking down at higher rates, we have plenty of, you know, we have access to get replacement units and get them into the hands of the kids so we are able to maintain our programs. In addition, we have ordered iPads for all the new students in pre-k through first grade. That is not a one-to-one, but there are enough to cover the needs of those classes. And those devices are not being paid for with local taxpayer funds. We have received a grant from a federal grant. We have received a grant, from a federal grant, it's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, and that is paying for those devices. Couple of other highlights, new staff in our district have just today completed their three-day orientation program, which will prepare them for the start of the school year. Among the topics that were covered in this included some social and emotional learning training and Crisis Prevention Institute training. By the way, both of those, we just approved Ms. DeSolvey and Harley Isabella Muren for, who did that training. Those are our teachers, our, you know, our people who went out and were trained and now are in here training arts there, which I think is fantastic. South Hunnernan, the teacher, the rest of the teachers, old and new, will be participating in in-service days on August 24th and 25th, and they will be covering a variety of talk topics, including, as Mr. Suso mentioned, mental health training, as well as becoming more familiar with the new math programs that were. Let's see, one thing that parents will see in the first month of the school year, the Department of Education is once again requiring school districts to administer a state standardized test called the Start Strong Assessment. You may remember this from the last, the previous two years. The kids will be taking those tests, it takes, it's about an hour of testing a day. Not every grade is tested. It tests on material that was learned last school year, and the purpose of it is, it's kind of for benchmarking to identify gaps in the learning. Now, our teachers do their own benchmarking as well, so this is a little redundant, but it is, you know, we have used the data to try to see where we're at and, you know, move, hopefully move people forward in a, in a positive way. Those tests, so students in grades four through 10 will be tested in math, students in grades six, nine, and 12 will be tested in science, and students in grades four through eight will be tested in English Language Arts. So, that's it for that. Few other notes, Dr. Nesmith has hit the ground running as our Director of Pupil Services. We have a private firm, The Public Consulting Group, which we hired last month, they have already begun gathering the data. They are going to be doing an audit of the district's Special Education Department and our practices, just as we have done with other departments of the school. We are kind of reviewing major systems every year. So, this is the next step in that, which I think is a very positive thing, and make sure that we are operating using best practices and hopefully providing better services and improving ourselves every year. An email was recently sent out from Mr. Suso, asking families that do not have internet access to contact the district. If that's the case, we will provide them with a hotspot. That way, they can have home internet access. We want every kid to have that access. It, you know, so hopefully we will catch people that way. The state of New Jersey has waived high school graduation assessment requirements for the class of 2023. So, that means that, you know, the, there is no final test, you know, as there, as there used to be. Finally, there will be 19 special edu, or 19 education students from TCNJ who will be spending time this fall at Lambertville Public School, and they will be observing. They're not student teachers, but they are just students who are maybe in their sophomore years or their junior years, they are doing classroom observations. In addition, we will have 18 TCNJ students working with some of our multilingual learners and their ESL teachers this fall. So, that's it for my report. With that, is there any comments or questions?
I just have a question. Jim, you mentioned Back to School and Tony being available for conversation. Is it at Back to School Night, which is September 21st, not September 14th?
No, it's, yeah, just to clarify, so the 14th, we'll be doing a presentation. Separate to Back to School Night, like we did on June 1st, where we'll be available, it will be in this room, with the likely, but we will be screening it and we will be recording it, and that's when we'll give a little bit more details as a follow-up to our team for.
So, that presentation then will be specific to the?
Correct.
And Back to School Night is the 21st for seven through 12, the 22nd for pre-K through six.
Yep.
For the calendar.
And I really do hope that, that families read the information on the website and, and attend or, or watch the presentation. It really is an opportunity to not only learn about this curriculum, but to understand the process, and I for one have been very impressed in looking at the materials. It's obvious that there's a lot of thought and expertise that goes into this, and I, I think that parents will feel the same.
Any other questions on that report? With that, we're closed.
All right, I'll start there.
Yeah.
Sean Els?
Yeah.
Gallagher?
Yeah.
Brian Hughes?
Yes.
And Ryan Tupper?
Yes.
Okay. Policy?
Hey, so, we did meet this evening, just bringing back forward the policies we discussed at our last meeting, which was the student journalism. Just mentioning that for a moment, we also have a, a letter B in here around abolishment. In order to pass the one, we need to abolish two others. So, I'll, I'll do those in the right order when, when the time comes. And then the others that were reviewed on second reading was the district, the issued identified card, identification cards, which Tony demonstrated a few uses of those, so just putting that policy into place before school starts. And then, there was a second reading for 3229, which is the Financial Relationships Policy. So, I, and we also have a policy this month, which is on a first read, which is around harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I just want to, this is a really long policy, as you could possibly imagine, about 30 pages, it's probably one of our longest. But I will make a comment, there's, there's a few changes in here, but the, the big one is around documentation of the communications that happen to parents and the rules of those who have been, are being notified. The other one is, is actually something we are not changing, and I'll explain that in a second, and it's around the, you know, before determining if it's a hid, the principal can assess and determine whether or not it's a non-hid. We are not instituting that. We are instituting a consistent approach to identifying whether or not something is a hid, and that is by having our hid specialist make that determination. So, we're not letting someone else make that determination, which is what the, the suggested policy update was for this, this term, and we're not going to do that. We're actually going to do it consistently so that it's transparent and thorough, and it's done by a independent point of contact. So, let me start with the approval of, or move to items A and C first, and then we'll do the separated stuff, okay? So, I move A and B, A and C, sorry.
Sorry.
Read the vote on them separately, Andrew.
So, Brian Hughes?
Yes.
President Tulli?
Yeah.
Sean Els?
Ah, yeah.
Gallagher?
Yeah.
And Ryan Tupper?
Yeah.
And Ryan Tupper?
And then I move letter B.
Second.
Discussion? All right. So, Sean Els?
I actually, I do have a quick question on that. So, the abolishing of health around school, not for public.
Correct, because the second read on C actually will replace that, which is why we voted on that one first.
Going to supersede it, but we have to eliminate it from, officially.
Right. In that case, yes.
To go?
Yeah.
Brian Hughes?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
So, school and community, obviously, a lot of the things that we talk about, Tony, and then present in our, in his presentation, but one of the things we talked about is the new Student Board of Education member. Folks may not know that there is new legislation that requires that, in New Jersey, that there be a Student Board of Education member, and, but there's some flexibility in terms of how we, how we appoint that person, or by vote, and we've decided that the students will vote to choose who will be the member. And information was sent out to students over the summer, but we've decided that we will send it out again at the beginning of the school year because students may not have seen that. And then, my understanding is that we'll try to get that vote in September so that the new member can join us in our September meeting. They will not be a voting member, but they will be here to voice, voice the, the needs of the middle school and high school in particular. Another thing we discussed is the after-care challenges. Lambertville Academy contacted Tony to let them know that, let them know that they're full, and there were some families in Lambertville that were still looking for after-school care. So, Tony's been working with the YMCA to reestablish the after-school program at West Amwell, but would potentially bus Lambertville students to that, to that program. Obviously, that's a challenge with staffing and with busing, but it looks like that's something that we'll be able to, we'll be able to do.
The good news is, we were close to not being able to run the West Amwell program because of lack of just patience. They were really concerned, and financially, it just wasn't going to be feasible, but I know Dave's been pushing that, you know, in some of his communications, so I was contacted by the YO on Friday last week saying they are going to run the program again, they're hoping to get some more kids enrolled. But the good news is, for right now, you know, we'll have after care.
I think it's important to know, you know, we call it after care, but it's actually when school is not in session as well. So, like breaks and otherwise, I just, I just want to call it out, because we keep calling it after care, and you might look at the break and go, whoa, you know, but at the same time, it covers when kids are not at school, like during breaks and whatever you bring for a review.
Good point. Another thing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Another thing we talked about is the district accomplishments. So, we know that there's a lot of hard work that goes into some of the, the new things that we're implementing this school year, and there's a lot to be proud of, and sometimes those things can be lost. So, Tony's been doing a great job, and will continue to educate district parents using the listserv, and also through the newsletters, but sometimes there's things that the community also would benefit from learning, to understand the successes of the district and, and how much we've been, how much work has gone into enhancing and improving our programs. So, for example, the, the CUSAC score is something that is really something that should be celebrated, and so that we're looking at, you know, whether or not there would be press releases regarding that, or something to get the information out to, to the rest of the community, not just parents. We also talked about interim accessibility issues. So, we know that through the discussion of the referendum process, our priority in the district is to address some of the ADA issues that we have, that we're not ADA compliant. And because this project is obviously going to take some time, we want to identify if there's any solutions that could, could at least improve some of the, the spaces within our facilities. So, Tony's going to be working with the local parents, and a, there's a disability advocacy group that may be able to help us identify resources and options for that. We talked about, obviously, the, the building and the bonds, the construction, and I wanted to highlight the fact that it, it really does, you know, it's reassuring to hear how much effort and thought is going in to the transitions, that the administration is working on it well ahead of time, really looking at each and every aspect of the, the transitions, including from LPS to, to the St. John's School, and then when we, when we move all of the, the kids to, for the reconfiguration. There's obviously a lot of moving parts, and I think the administration is really doing a deep dive into that to make sure that that, that happens smoothly. And then we talked about the school naming. So, this is something we've talked about, about as a fun thing that will come from this, and, you know, kind of looking at how we would want to, want to go forward with that. And I, at this point, the idea is that the, we would gather names primarily from the students, and then administration would take a look at that and hone down the list, and then put out some options for the kids to vote on. So, that would be not only the school names, but also the, the new mascots, and that should be, that should be a lot of fun. And it might be something that the new Student Board of Education member could be a part of leading, although because they really are about the high school and middle school, we have to make sure that the elementary students are also involved in that discussion. So, that was it, I have nothing to move, but any discussion? All right.
Voice vote?
Can I get some of the vote favoritism information?
Yeah, make a motion to approve item A and B.
And I will second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Eric?
We will now have a second period of public comment, if anyone's interested.
Good. Me again, Michaela Bertishaw, West Amwell. And this, no more questions, I've asked them all, but just a, a request, I'm going to ask all of you board members to stick a pin in this meeting, okay? We heard the stories about, you know, 12 years ago, financial issues in the district, now we're implementing a need-be policy to create, theoretically, if this is the story, right, to create the activity to offset the budget. What happens is we forget why we did it, and it just becomes no longer a practice of need, but a policy. So, I bring that up more, less about the parking, because, or the athletics, because I get it, but more to the point of, we know we have a teacher shortage, bus driver shortage, labor shortage across the board. I want the pin for today to kind of be a memory that says, "We are in this position of asking our maintenance team, our coaches, to drive our buses because it's need. This is a need-be practice." When I was teaching in North Carolina, fortunately, I was only a JV coach, but varsity coaches had to get their CDL license required to drive the bus, okay? I don't want to see that in our district as a policy unless it's a choice, right? I can respect a choice. But when we set out for the referendum, a lot of the conversation was, "How do we attract and retain not only the students, but the right personnel?" And with the weight of the stuff on teachers and maintenance and coach personnel's shoulders today, I just ask you to think about being cautious of turning this practice into a policy, because I don't think that that's the choice we want to make, given what we have, the information.
Can I say one, actually, two things about that, Michaela? I think all, if I'm not mistaken, all of those folks volunteered. No, we're not making them. Okay.
But in two years, the coaches are coming in, now, oh, go get this.
Right.
We know it now, right? But when it kind of becomes norm, and there's a different order bed, and words, you know, things are changed, that we don't forget that we're, we're asking this of them. If we want to invite people to participate in something, and I totally support that.
Absolutely.
I, I get that, but it's, it's a little thing of, well, we'll make this, we'll change, and then a couple of years later, why are we doing this? We don't know, but it's not really what we want to change.
Well, I think that's a great, I do think that's a great point, and I, and again, and now I will just, again, a kudo for superintendent, one of the things that I have loved, that would be is brought in here, is this, look at everything, look at things, you know what I mean? And that's what, we talked about that, we're looking at special ed, right? We looked at guidance, because guidance was a longtime problem that we asked, the boards asked previous superintendents to try to solve, and I think that we are in a much better place with guidance, thanks to what we did two years ago. We looked at the English as a special, second language last year, right? Now, we're looking at the, so that's, that, that mindset, that we look at stuff, right? And we evaluate stuff, and as you said, we don't, because I agree, that's, you know, that, the reason for that, you know, activity fee, you know, that may have been done for one reason at one time, and, and maybe it's no longer. Right. So. Oh, he's committed to. He's locked in. You don't see the chain on his leg here. We keep him locked to his desk, you know? Guy's here all the time. I agree.
Do you think so?
Appreciate it.
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, but you have to come to the thing, because people can't hear you guys from the office.
The vast audience at home wants to hear what you're saying.
No one really needs to hear this, except for you guys. Just to piggyback on what she's saying, and you're trying to attract people, some people might run scared if you're going to require a soccer coach to get a CDL license and drive a bunch of children around. It's not for everybody, and I don't know that I would really just want to throw my kid on a bus with someone that just got the driver's license. I've had mine since I was 21, and it's a challenge at times, even still, so that, put the pin in that, two things.
Oh, absolutely, but I want to, I do want to reiterate, we're not asking coaches to get their licenses because we want them to drive those buses. These are folks who said, "Hey," These are folks who said, hey, you're, 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 you need bus drivers and you're paying thirty-five, forty bucks an hour for bus drivers. I think I'd like to make a little bit of extra money. And we're like, hey, that's fantastic, and you're helping us out, of course. So there is no thought, I don't think, to, to asking coaches to do. We already ask our teachers to do a lot. We ask our paraprofessionals to do a lot. We're not, we don't want to ask people to do any more than we have, you know, anymore.
No plans to include that in the job script, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Appreciate the reminder.
I agree.
Yeah, Michael Strauss from West Amwell. At first, I, I do have to say, I think Michaela and I kind of are on the same page on a lot of things. And one of the things that I've seen in tonight's meeting is it's a turning point meeting. So this is a point where the foundation's been laid and i- it's now time to start evaluating those policies. And Jim, I can't thank you enough for bringing all of the history to this. It is, you're really a resource, and it's, it's great to, to hear where these things came from.
Well, I've got, I have three years left. I'm running for one final term, and that will be it, so.
I, I didn't want to just say one thing, and it, it's in response to your report, Ronnie. The, the naming of the new schools, I would just like to reconsider having, having the students be the sole voice in that. I, I love having them, them participate. Michaela and I definitely chose Wildcats and Leopards. But there's, they're ju-, jumping from that foundation. The name of, of the institutions really has a gravitas. It has a, a point of moving forward, of vision. And while the students are part of that vision, I'm not sure whether they have the full scope of that vision where they are. So I, I would definitely encourage that to be more of a community endeavor rather than a student endeavor. That's all. Thank you.
Sherri from Lambertville. First thing I want to say, and it came up a couple of times. I went to the presentation on June 1st that Mr. Suzo and Mr. Hewitt put on. It was lightly attended. It was so good. And honestly, I know that people have been talking about the health curriculum, and I was stunned that this wasn't a packed house. It was such a, a wonderful presentation. It was so thorough, and I, I learned a lot. I didn't know what we were already required to do, how, what we now had to do, how we were going to do it, and also how much control the district has and the curriculum writers have, looking at what's required and how to implement that. And it really stuck out to me that so much of it is about making our students, all of our students feel comfortable and included, and that, that our teachers and our administrators, they know our population. So for everybody who is interested in all, tell them to come to this meeting because it honestly, it, it was, it was, it was so, so, so well done. And we were allowed to ask questions at the end, and both Mr. Hewitt and Mr. Suzo were more than happy to respond, and it was great. The other thing I wanted to, to bring up is I'm kind of baffled by this financial relationship between student, or teachers and others. I'm wondering why this policy had to be created, and it, it troubles me. I mean, first of all, like my husband's a teacher, and when my older daughter was little, we had a couple of his students and his coaches play, babysit. It was like, we knew the families, and they were like, she's cute, okay, you know, babysit. It's, that seemed fine. And I look here in our community, where we're a small community, we're a closed community, and a lot of our teachers live in our community. And it seems crazy to me that I couldn't, you know, if, if my kid is in someone's class, if we're neighbors, they can't even ask my other kid to babysit or can't buy Girl Scout cookies from her. I don't understand why we need a policy that's, that's that accessible. I understand conflict of interest, and I get, I mean, I kind of get, you know, the tutoring and how there may be an influence there. But it seems far too heavy handed. And especially, again, these are our neighbors, our, you know, I, I know these kids not, I'm not a teacher, but, you know, people know my kids not because they're in their class, but because we've all been here together. So I, I can't remember if that was first or second reading, but I just want to throw that out there. When the, if it is, if it's just been said, yes, when it comes up for review, it, it doesn't sit well with me. Thanks.
Hello, Erica Crim, President of the South Hundredan Regional Education Association. And I am also coming up to, to bring up policy 3229. I wanted to first of all thank the Policy Committee for striking the language at the first reading about restricting charitable clauses. When I spoke to my executive board, that was their number one concern, was feeling restricted from supporting students, supporting student clauses, supporting each other's staff and vice versa. And we all agree that removing that language will allow our community to keep supporting each other as we always have been. Some of the specifics, and I'm kind of in the, in the same ballpark as you, I've actually gone back and forth with Mr. Suzo, and we've clarified some of the language because I would agree the policy as written feels a little heavy handed. And then when I've asked you questions, Mr. Suzo, you very clearly said, well, that's not what we're, we're intending. However, because not everyone's privy to those conversations, I just kind of wanted to be here and go on the record for the board, for the administration, and more importantly, any future board members and future administration, that it is the understanding of the association that first of all, summers do not present any conflict of, of interests for coaching, for tutoring, as long as it is not on school premises using school property. And also that with private businesses, that staff members who have, for example, vendor tables at local community fairs or websites where they're selling cosmetics or nails, colors, street nails, I don't sell them, but I wear them, that if members of the community approach outside of school these vendor tables or these websites, that our staff is not expected to turn away business or be responsible for that in order to not be in violation of this policy. Again, Mr. Suzo has clarified that with me personally, but I felt that it was important to clarify for the full community. Thank you again, Mr. Suzo, for listening to our concerns. Thank you to the Policy Board for listening. Not sure what to say about the babysitting, I'm going to let her take that. Thank you.
I think if there's a question about the policy, that we should address the situation with the individual and Mr. Suzo at the time. So again, the policy is as written, it's passed, just to answer your question, it's a final, it's never final, right? But at the end of the day, it is what we have approved for now. Mrs. Crim did a very good job of explaining some of the waivers and the, and the variations that, you know, policies are not perfect, and they don't cover every single thing that happens. But there is a very clear clause in there. And again, if there is a question, Mr. Suzo is the person to address the question with for a teacher or a parent. So if there's a question about this policy, this is not South Hundredan's policy by ourselves, right? There are other schools in New Jersey that do have this policy, as well as 1230, which is a policy we've actually had in place since 2005? 2005, so this is not new, but this particular policy gets into a little bit more detail. So again, if there's a question about it, my recommendation is to, to talk to Mr. Suzo about that situation. If you're going to hire your child's teacher to babysit your child, you should talk to Mr. Suzo about that.
I mean, in reality, here's what, let me, just generically, without getting into it. Obviously, when, when we make a policy like this, there's been issues with consistency, full disclosure. Things were happening, and it's important from the district perspective that we're consistent, and we set a consistent expectation because it's not okay for some, but not others. And that's kind of where we were. So that's the reason where the policy came from, you know? And then also, quite honestly, you know, I get the whole small, small community thing, and, and I get all that, but it's also to protect our teachers so they're not in a bad spot, right? So, and as much as relationships with neighbors can be great, sometimes things can happen. And all of a sudden, you know, you were my neighbor, but now I was paying you to tutor my child, or you have a client, it gets messy. And in a perfect world, my hope is we don't have to deal with that, but I do, right? And then there's, has been situations. So to try to make it consistent, to try to make it clean, but also not prevent folks from their business and things like that, that's where we landed with the policy. And if there wasn't a need for it, we wouldn't have just created it. So, you know, that's kind of all I'll, I'll say. And, and obviously, if folks have questions about it, I'm more than willing to kind of work with them and also work with the association on it.
If I may, I'll just add one thing, that's Crim, we, we did talk about all of those things that you brought up during our policy meetings. So, and that's, and what you, what you expressed, that is also my understanding of how the policy will be interpreted.
Agreed.
I think, I don't, Tracy, I think agrees. So we, we discussed it actually in both meetings.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so just so you know that we. Yeah, so. Well, ten years from now, we'll all have.
And again, if language needs to be tweaked in the future, we certainly can, can do that.
You don't have anybody on?
You don't have anybody online?
No, the Google form for comment.
No, there's a huge crowd of people calling in, watching in from the shore or their final vacation. I know this has been circled on the calendar, probably watching back to the yank.
No one else is, wants to come forward, then we will end this portion of the public comment.
Second.
All those favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Any ads at eight forty PM, have a great night.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Have a great school year, everybody.
Yeah.